Antiques on York in Rockville, Indiana, 100 West York Street, celebrating our 10th year in business.
I would think you're applauding, John, when you hear that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming. All right. Dan will not be with us today. He's at a conference. Poor guy in Florida someplace.
My kind of conference.
Yeah. So we have minutes from the February 5 meeting to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February 5.
And I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, then we have payroll, an amount of $230,786.30.
There was no union hospital and she just got the payroll done, so she's not done any claims for it.
Okay.
The next move.
Okay, that'll work.
I approve, or I make a motion to approve payroll, around $230,786.30.
And I would second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Let's see, 19?
Yes.
All right. We have a request of a couple of out-of-cycle checks.
There's two of them, and they're both for the Wi-Fi that's out at the lake.
Good, okay.
And he's going to talk about the one. But one's $39,115 and one is for $49,546. You have copies.
Okay, you want to tell us what those are, Chris?
Yeah, one for UMAC, for the boring and shrinking of the Wi-Fi.
Okay.
And then the other one is from ICS, and they're the ones that actually installed the hardware for the Wi-Fi.
Okay. And we've already approved of this. This also is art money, not the general phone money.
Well, part of it comes out of his phone and part of it comes out of ours.
Yep, and we were just waiting for the invoices to come in, so we'd be approved of those. So I make a motion to approve the out-of-cycle checks, the amount of $88,661 to cover the Wi-Fi installation out at Rockville Lake Park.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Did you need an out-of-cycle for the $5,500 for?
Yeah. For Thrive.
Okay, the ARC also approved, the office committee also approved a $5,500 one-time match. Thrive, West Central Economic Development Arm, down in, it covers the, actually now a six-county area, has received a grant for a revolving loan fund of, I'm going to think a million dollars, but I'm not sure that's right. I think it is. And our one-time buy-in to that, which would enable any of our people living in our county, we have a revolving loan fund available in Park County, but our funds are limited, only amount that is. This would be a step above that. If our people, for some reason, whether we didn't have enough funds or whatever to grant that request, they could take that request then to the Thrive entity and also be eligible for a revolving loan fund. What a revolving loan fund is, it's a pool of money created by either the federal government or the state government for local entities to have available to those businesses, entrepreneurs, who are trying to start up a business but haven't met the requirements to satisfy traditional loan givers, loan financial institutions. So if they have gone and tried to get a traditional loan and have been turned down, but still have interest and still seems like a viable, then they can come to partnership, our county in this case, the Redevelopment Commission, and request a loan, and we have several of those out now. And then that board has to decide whether to take a chance with those folks coming in because they didn't meet their criteria or the requirement for traditional loans. But maybe, maybe that board can see that they just need to help get going and see how that goes. We've had many successes with that. We've had some that we've had to go after for collections, but you know, all in all, it's been a very successful program, so that's what this is for.
They was able to find funding for $800,000.
$800,000, okay, that's great to have that pool there. So that's all on, hello, Tim Gil. So we have an out-of-cycle check to write from the ARC funds to cover that one-time match of $5,500, and I would make that motion if you do so.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Signature. And then the other one is the big one, and if you guys approve that, then as soon as I leave with the council, the rest of them.
This line says, during your meeting, which is held on, you want me to sign it on that line too?
It's asking for a date.
Want me to sign below it somewhere?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll put the date on it. Today's the 19th, although we actually approved that some time ago.
That you guys approved, and I can write the date on it.
Okay.
And it pairs one for the big one.
Okay.
And then I'll go ahead and make the motion. It's all three invoices or just?
No, those are just copies.
Okay, so just this one here, okay. Make a motion, we do an out-of-cycle check. Another one to Thrive, which is, I think, the annual one that we pay for $54,069.30, subject to council approving the rest of the budget for that.
And I would second that. All in favor say aye. So this is the fee we paid at Thrive. Thrive provides all kinds of services, largely for Area 7 aging, ours food, transportation. Park County has not participated very well in the last 20 years in the participation part because the information was just not shared very well. We've improved that, made that much better, and now if you see buses in town or in the county with Thrive on the side, that's what that entity is, providing transportation to any place really that elders need to go, people that can't drive on their own need to go, doctors, doctor appointments, grocery stores, those types of things. And that's what Thrive does. So this is our share of the cost of providing that entity. Okay. And then... Anything else? Are we had checks?
That's it, checks.
Okay, then you have listed as Indian broadband infrastructure investment zone application?
I'd be the one.
Okay. Oh, this is for the internet, okay. So they're making an application for creating an investment zone. All right, I make a motion, we approve the application for the investment zone?
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Anything else?
It's the ordinance.
Aye, 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 yeah, okay. Surrounding counties have ordinances in place eliminating, eliminating the opportunity for weapons to be brought into the courthouse. That's always been policy here, but we have never had an ordinance in place to do that. So the Security Committee at the courthouse, including the judge and the probation officer, prosecutors, the people involved with that type of thing, have asked that we get a, an ordinance in place, and that's what this ordinance is. What number would it be, 2024?
2024-01.
01, okay.
This original one I have here has it.
Okay.
I changed something. There was a typo in it, so you'll want to use that as your original one.
Yeah.
I stripped paragraph four because that was a leftover paragraph.
Okay.
It also has a section in there besides just the security, but to block off public versus private parts. Remember, we had the people come with the videos?
Yes.
So that's in there also. It allows the office holder to declare an area to be a non-public area and to exclude the public from it for operational purposes.
Okay. Any questions on it? You good to go?
Nope, I think good to go, so I make a motion, we adopt the ordinance 2024-01 for security at the courthouse.
And I would second that. All in favor say aye.
We'd also let them do that here at the annex also, like declare a non-public area.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, correct. Any of your buildings.
Does this need to be advertised?
Yeah, it's got a, I got it at the back. It says publish one time in 30 days, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, so once in 30 days.
Okay, Chris, we had you up for the Wi-Fi. Anything else you want to report on?
I just figured, in case you guys had the question.
Okay. What we're talking about is that Rockville Lake Park. It's really a significant, significantly important thing for Wi-Fi to be available for campers when they come into a campground. So this will provide, we didn't have that before, we will have that now, so that's where that money's coming from. And the money is coming from the ARC fund, so again, that's not a general fund expense. Some comes from your fund, some comes from the ARC fund.
Yep.
Okay, and we've already approved that. Anything from us you want?
There was another paper.
It was same day, same meeting.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Chris, you're doing good. Keep it up. I'll never say that again. All right, from Nicole, we have the, I mean, the monthly report. Got that somewhere.
It's almost to the bottom.
Oh, that's, that's the one from the Wi-Fi. That's why I don't remember what that was. Okay, got the ordinance done already? It's all right, done already. I started going through my stack. $5,500 is done. Broadband was done, it's okay.
That's just what Chris was coming to.
Yeah.
And that's the invoice that you vote to pay, and that's just a brochure.
The government here is going to be reporting, okay. Stephanie, yeah, come on up. This is Stephanie Dow. She's with the, well, I'm not sure actually what the committee is called through the judge and all the people doing that. What is that committee called?
It's the Judicial Reinvestment Advisory Council.
Can't imagine why I couldn't think of that. Let us know what you got.
Okay, we have, the, the LCC has approved a grant application from the Park County Sheriff's Office for narcotics overtime, which will provide overtime for officers to conduct narcotic investigations when off duty and in the amount of $5,000. It would be out of the restricted funds, and the current balance in that fund is $70,315.26, and this would be for the year.
Yeah, just so people understand, I know most people here may, who come on a regular basis may understand, but a lot of folks listening to the, to the meeting may not. JRA committee here, there is money available through the opioid money that was given to all the counties. I don't remember how much we got, but it was the wish of the council and the commissioners that rather than giving that committee that, those funds to do with as they choose, that we felt we should have a, oh, a trail, yes, a paper trail of how that's done. So we are not in any position or wanting to be in a position to overrule anything that this, this committee is going to recommend, but the process is the committee will take the grant request or the application from the sheriff's department. They will consider if it's something they want to grant or not, and they have decided in this case they would like to fund that grant, and then they just have to come to us and ask for us to okay them getting the money out of that fund to do that, so. My, I make the motion that we approve this request from JRA.
Just clarify, Steph, because we got something different up here. You mentioned $5,000, but we've got $7,000 up here.
That's what she told me when she called.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. I got it confused with something else.
Okay, so it's $5,000?
Yes, $5,000.
So you want to prove that.
Good catch. I'll prove that, that request for $5,000.
And I second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Stephanie.
Thank you. Stephanie, you'll have to get the paperwork, so to put it in front of the council to approve it in additional appropriation.
So I do the request for the agenda and then come to the council meeting?
And it's on the 14th, but I need it to, it won't be the 14th because I, it's already gone to the paper. The next paper going, the paper will be March 20th or something, so I need that before then, so it will go on April's council meeting.
Okay.
It's just a cumbersome way, but it just needs to be that way to have trail of what's done. So you come to us to approve the grant. We approve the grant, but we don't approve the money. They'll have to appropriate money to cover that then.
Okay, so I attend the meeting on the 14th?
No, on the 20th, but give me the information before the 20th, so I can get it in the paper.
Okay, okay, I know. And then attend the meeting on the 20th?
Or well, the second Thursday of the month.
Okay, so...
I'll get with you.
Okay, I'll call you.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The second Thursday would be the 14th.
14th of March.
Of March, yeah, March 14th.
She's already sent to the paper for that.
No, I've already sent the paper. It'd be the second Thursday in April.
In April, ah, okay, and...
But do I need to come to the meeting first? Or do I just send you the letter?
Send me the information so I can get it in the paper.
And then you'll come to the second meeting, or the meeting in April.
And that's the 11th.
For April 11th, you'll have to go to the council meeting.
Okay, Randy.
How you doing?
We're doing good. How you doing?
All right.
For those who didn't know, Randy, after about 50 years of service to Park County, is going to be retiring here at the end of May. So now we're in the throes of trying to find someone to do what he does.
I ain't going to be much trouble.
Find one person to do what he does?
Yeah.
I did get some quotes for hauling stone duraburn.
Yeah, good.
They are making a little bit of duraburn now, so. That was 933 a ton from Brad Lindley Trucking.
Okay.
So he's already started.
Okay.
It's only about 5,000 tons.
Okay.
That should be around $93,000.
Maybe enough hit us this spring then if we have a...
Yeah, should be.
Roads are calmed down pretty good.
We've made a lot of headway on them.
Great.
That should take care of us, I think.
Okay.
Then we need to award the paving contract for Strawberry Road and County Road 1100 East. The amount of $234,000, 234,656.
Strawberry goes going from the town to the entrance to the prison.
Yep.
How much, what was that number again, Randy? Two?
234,656, 40.
I make the motion that we approve the, the funding of the Community Crossings Funds for the work at the, at the county highway in the amount of $234,656.42.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye. This is community crossings money focused spending this time.
We'd sign both contracts. You need to test them, and you can keep one. I'll take one.
It's great to have your backup running.
Yeah.
Great.
They're not complete, but we did, rather than do the job. Then we had a truck to go down on us. We've had three or four go down, but this was a major expense. RCN cooler went out of it, and so therefore it got hot and either cracked the head or the block. We don't know which. So rather than, so we get the truck back quicker, I ordered a long block for it. So that'll include the head and the block. We had to put injectors in it and alternator and the water pump, that kind of stuff. We're going to let them do it down there at Kenworth.
Good.
And the amount around $34,818, so.
Isn't that amazing?
Yeah. Yeah, it's ridiculous. I think that'd be cheaper in the long run and...
I agree. Don't know what else to damage anyway, so.
No, that's true. Now, if you ordered the head, then you'd turn around, the block would be cracked. And we got a bill from, remember back when they had the ice? Our truck got off on Cold Bluff Road, broke a pole. It's a mighty damn expensive pole.
Whose pole was that?
Duke's.
Duke's, okay.
We turned it in to insurance.
Yeah.
Let them find out.
Yeah.
Really had, I don't know, four or five bucket trucks down there and...
Well, I appreciate you being out that night, and I appreciate your call at 5:00 in the morning because I'd asked you that night to let me know if the roads were getting worse. That's the night, this night we had the, the ice freezing rain, and Randy was out. I talked to him a little bit after midnight, talked to the sheriff's deputy who was out also, asked him if he got worse to let me know, and they both called right about 5:00, a little bit after 5:00. Randy was driving on the road down where that truck was, down on Cold Bluff Road, that had slid off the road, hit a pole, and he was having to straddle the edge of the road, so he had some tires up the, on the snow, so it wouldn't be sliding off the road. So he had told me how bad that, or then your deputy called and said also he was on the way to another slide-off. That too, then it was almost impossible to stay on the road, so that's when we made the decision that we made to close her. What else you got?
Then our grader, all is broke down too. Waiting on the alternator for it. We took it up to RCN, see if they could rebuild it.
I was going to ask you if they could do that. Really? I thought they could do anything up there.
And I forget the name of the place in Taral we took it to. They can't get parts for it either. So it's $2,300. It's coming from southeastern.
I want you to get all these things broken down and fixed before you retire, so nobody won't have to deal with that.
I think we'll run out of money first.
Grader's always broke.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. Our patchen, Liberty Township, Sugar Creek Township, Howard Township, Parlor Raccoon is all done. I'll say done right now.
Today.
After this, we get this rain later on. It may change, but, and we're working on Reserve, Penn, and Washington. Like I say, we made a lot of headway on the Babel Road, so.
Great.
Yeah, I saw a grader down by Torch Bridge this morning.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, I don't think there's any big holes left.
I had a lot of compliments on you guys on the road for the detour coming out of Rockville about 41.
That's been a nightmare.
That has been a nightmare, and I've been asked about the cost of that, if we've approached the town of Rockville or the engineering about reimbursement for that. Have we? Is that something we should do, shouldn't do? What are your thoughts on that?
Well, yeah, it wouldn't hurt. At least we keep some material.
Yeah, it's just a matter of funny, because they don't want to, I mean, these are county people too, live in the town trying to get out. They need a decent road to do that on, but it's just a matter of where the funds come from, so.
As far as I know, they never did ask to use that as a detour.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm looking to think about that and see if we want to approach them about some funds. I don't know if engineering, how that comes from the engineering company, if that comes from the town, who we asked for about that. Certainly need to be done, and I'm glad you took care of that. How often do you have to go deal with it?
At least once a week. Should be now. We got a lot, quite a bit of material on it.
Okay.
But we was doing it about two or three times a week.
Wow.
Log trucks used it.
Yes.
Their trucks used it hauling, it was a dirty area.
Yeah, and they're going to use it, whole project, so that's why I think maybe that company is be talking about what they're going to do. Okay.
But that's all I have, unless you guys have something for me.
Doing good. The trees were taken care of, I understand, on the Jackson Bridge and...
Oh, from the other?
Yeah, up at that bridge. Can you see it?
Up there?
Nope, up north.
Bowser Ford.
Bowser Ford, yeah, yeah. They let me know they got those off. They're fine. They had a difficult time getting them. They finally did, so that should be good. And the tree was dropped there at Bowser Ford, so ought to be, ought to be good. Okay, nothing from us?
Okay, no, I think so.
We'll still get together one of these days as soon as we get Maple done here, and we'll figure out. I do, I have this copy you gave me of the, your job description and the engineering description. We'll see what needs to be tweaked with those and changed with those, because now's the time to make whatever changes you think or we think needs to be done on that, so when we get somebody new, we're starting off where we want to be instead of trying to catch up later or do something different later, so. I'll probably even buy you a lunch, I suppose. Maybe.
I'd better get that in writing.
Yeah. We got a slush fund for that.
Forty-two years ago?
Well, maybe, yeah, about forty-three or three years ago.
What year did you start the highway department?
73, later part of 73.
You know, real friends.
High school.
Real friends don't tell friends. In 1973 was 50 years ago, and I wouldn't mention it.
Well, that dawned on me at my granddaughter's graduation.
Yeah, 50 years.
Done that 50 years ago, so.
Said that was the last time you bought him lunch.
That was an accident. It's because I shot an extra squirrel. All right, well, we appreciate you.
Okay, you guys have a good evening.
You too. Julie's not here. Mr. Fraser is though. Mr. Fraser.
How's it going?
We're doing good. How you doing?
Good, all right. Staying busy. We've got a report of collections. To date is $4,460.21 and housing, out-of-county inmates, $47,588.50. And that's all I have.
He should be starting March, I think, with the jail renovation up there. When that March, they were planning on getting going if they could, if the weather cooperated.
Spring, spring sometime.
Yeah, I think March, toward the end of March, if the weather cooperates.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah, be good. Get that tile out of your office for Felton off the ceiling?
Yeah, yeah.
Very good.
Got new tile put up, so it looks good.
Okay, nothing new from us?
Nope.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have anything for us today, young man?
Don't, I just kind of want to stop in and introduce myself.
Go on up.
I'm Luke Gill. Some of you may know me. Graduated from University of Southern Indiana in 2021 with a degree in civil engineering. Been working in Crawfordsville at DES Engineering. Didn't know if you guys had a civil team you're already working with. Appears you might. If you want competing bids, I would love to work here local. I'll just leave some of my cards here. You can contact me, but we do sewer, storm, water, site designs, everything except for structural. We don't touch structural, but would love to work with county, and if you guys would like competing bids or any help from us, we'd love to do.
He's, he's turned out amazingly well. If you know his bed, Kirk, you understand that statement, so he's done amazingly well.
That's all I got.
Nice to see you.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming. We'll certainly keep you in mind. We'll certainly keep you on the list. You guys got anything for us today?
I don't think so. We did meet out at Melcher.
How's it going?
Pretty good. They had the bridge off. They had, they did find some more deterioration on the east of Butment, which is why they called me to go out and look at it, so they're going to have to do, so the stone is really crumbling there on the northeast corner, so they're getting ready to cut that out and then pour a new part of the Butment on the east side. They redo on the west side. And then, that's the last I've heard. I think that was a week or two ago. I can't remember now. Otherwise, it's going well on. Then it'll be great to start the bridge inspections. But otherwise, it's going well. And then we'll be ready to start the bridge inspections first part of April. Get those proceed from state anyway. We'll be ready to go.
I know it's all weather dependent. You can't tell us, but if things go normally, if you expect them to go, how long a time before we get that Melcher Bridge back in operation? We talked spring before. Was that likely?
That's a fair question for Dan. Yeah, I don't know what their real schedule. I do know he said he had all the siding, the new siding already in shop and painted.
Great.
So I think once they do some repairs, get the Butment repaired, and get the riprap in, that's probably going to be kind of more of a painting, because that's more water related.
Yeah.
And get in there and get that in.
Yeah.
Otherwise...
Do you mind if when last summer, there wasn't a water last summer?
Yeah, right. Yeah, the whole fall. I mean, there's a lot of time, dry creeks everywhere. I mean, it was amazing.
My, got two bonds, but my bond, I've lived there all my life, basically. Never been that low. It was almost, it was almost empty. And maple syrup this year is awful for everybody around. And I really think, that's why I think it's just water cable's so low. I've got a friend who's maple syrup guy, but he also is a house inspector, well inspector. He's got wells, like you're talking about creeks. He's got wells that are empty, that have never been emptied before. Probably wherever we are.
Yeah, I heard you're having a hard time with the maples.
Oh, man. I got a friend that lives in them. And Green Castle, he has 7,500 taps. We just do 600 now. He used to do a couple thousand, but now he has 7,500. He should make about 1,500 gallons of syrup a year. He's got 425, and he thinks it's done. It's running a little bit today.
Wow.
I was telling Pam, I got a friend in Wisconsin that got 50,000 taps. And he makes about 455 gallon barrels full, about 22,000 gallons of maple syrup he makes a year. He's got 1,200 gallons, I mean, that's it. From 22,000 now to 1,200. And these aren't the me's of the world. These are the big boys of the world. And that's it. Setting them off, they're just done, so.
So you're still going to feed us in a couple weeks?
Oh, absolutely.
It's just going to be with much maple syrup.
I already called Aunt Trabino. She's got five.
That's all I really concerned.
All right, nothing from us you guys need? Good?
I don't think so, not right now, anyway. I do know there was an on-call contract I'd sent to Randy to cover like damage inspections, or we had that one that they wanted to permit loading for one of the bridges. So I came out and...
Good. Yeah, we talked about that last meeting, I think it was, or meeting before about that, about setting that up.
Right, so that's the only thing that we have.
Okay. Mr. Yocum. You guys know Tim Yocum? Tim Yocum is a county commissioner of Remaine County. He's also running for a state representative, a seat now held by Alan Morrison, so.
Correct.
He's out doing these things. So tell us what you got.
Well, I want to come on and say thank you for partnering with us for the county shared engineer.
Yeah.
I think it's a great program. I think it could be beneficial to all of us. And I, we all went through all the process on our side, and it's all go. And we're looking forward to moving forward with that project. Doesn't see how it can benefit both counties.
I've spoken with Jim Sharkey up at LTAP, as you know, and we intend to start that first, first of March. Soon as maple fair is over, then we'll have time to do that. We'll be doing our highway superintendent as well as the engineer at the same time. And of course, we'll keep you involved in all that stuff. What he's talking about is the state now allows, the state really wants every county to have a county engineer. We don't believe either of us actually have that we have enough work for a full-time county engineer. So as a result, a lot of those duties fall on our highway superintendent to do. And, and if we have engineering, we have to hire that out all the time, of course, as well. So the state offered $40,000 to each county to buy a contract with a highway engineer. You're not going to get a highway engineer for 100,000 bucks, say, or so, plus benefits on that. That's just ballpark, something number we're talking about. So then the state came out and said, okay, if two counties were to go together, because we asked about that, we could use each of our counties 40,000. So now we have 80,000 to apply toward an engineer. So if we could get an engineer, and actually it's only going to cost individual counties 25 to $30,000 by the time you pay for their, their benefits, as well as the other things involved, the tax and all that, then I think we would have enough business for a highway engineer in that, that range of money. Said it not to 100,000, but 30,000, we probably, probably afford that. Won't know until we try. And both of our councils have been very receptive of that, thinking that there's no guarantees that's going to be working. But maybe it is, and sometimes the only way to do something is to try it and see if that works out. You really can't lose on it. Whether it's purely beneficial, who knows, but you're going to get the work out of that anyway. And what I understand from engineers, you know better than I, typically I'm told from LTAP that really most highway engineers can earn their keep just in grad writing that we don't now have access to. Do you feel that's probably accurate statement?
That's probably true. A lot of the funding stuff and a lot of administrative stuff that, I mean, your highway superintendent, like Randy's doing a whole lot. I mean, compared to some of the other counties.
Five-year plan, asset management plan, all that stuff he's got to do.
Right.
Instead of working on the road. He's got to do all that at the same time.
And manages people, yeah.
It's a lot to ask of one person to do. It really is.
So, yeah, if you're looking at somebody half-time, I mean, normally you figure about 2,000, I mean, 2,080 if you go eight-hour day.
Yeah, there are only two counties in the state that do it now, Randolph and Henry.
Okay.
And they share one, and he works 10-hour days. He works two, two days in one county, two days in the other county. Each county has a separate office for him, so he can keep that county's things in that office. But we're not going to be concerned. We've talked to him, I've talked about this now for a couple of years. If he has a project going for Remaine County, he has to spend three days there, or all four days there in a row. Go do that.
Right.
We understand it's going to be reciprocal coming back. We're going to have times where we need more times as well. So hopefully be a good partnership, work that out, see how that, see how that works.
So you'd be looking at like about 1,000 hours for your county. So, yeah, you can probably...
Yeah, probably justify that, but we'll see.
I look forward to it. I really do. I think there's so many things we can do, partner together.
Yeah.
You know, two counties side by side, why can't we share resources? Why can't we do things together?
Well, you really should, and you should really be subservient to us, because really, Remaine County only exists because Park County gave you. We created you from us. Just keep on monitoring what you're talking about.
I did want to say, if elected, I will be here for you. I will come to meetings and be accessible. I think that's one of the biggest problems we have. The other thing is we have a lot of people get elected to state government and has no, had the experience of local government.
Yeah.
And some of the issues we fought with the state has been trying to take away our zoning and with the wind and solar and some of the CO2 stuff they forced down our throats and, you know, you need, you need that.
Your experience takes into that, which it certainly will take in. It's not to say that we do a good job, bad job. That's not, anything I make at all. But the spectrum of decisions, the myriad issues that come up in a meeting, if you've never done those kind of things before, heard those kinds of things before, you'd be completely lost and have to look up everything all the time. So I think you're bringing a wealth of experience into that job, if you should get there. So good luck.
Like I said, I'll be here for you. And you can call me anytime and...
I'll know where you live.
Being accessible is important as far as someone's serving.
Yeah.
And I will be there for you. Anything I can do for you, let me know. I will come to the meetings every once in a while, and if you've got anything, please let me know and see what I can do for you all.
We appreciate that, Tim. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Good luck to you.
Good luck, Tim. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Anybody got anything? And, Rockaway back there?
Hey, I heard you had gizzards the other day.
Every Thursday.
Yeah, yeah, we went.
I didn't know if you knew.
Oh, yeah, we got into the night. Her, of course, at Festival or Better.
I'll be there Thursday.
Well, yeah, because you were off like doing some grandkid thing or something, whatever it was. No priorities, they, no priorities.
I've made arrangements to have them delivered, so it's okay.
Really?
I like it. Well, I make a motion we adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry.
You asked one of the gentlemen with the copier machines to talk to you.
Yes.
He was in the office.
Good.
I gave him a list of the machines.
That's what I was wanting. Yeah, I thought I forwarded that to you.
And then...
What's his name?
I can't think of his name. I've got his card on my desk.
It's kind of like this. I know his brand. These kids grow up and do stuff.
I had Johnny contact, the one we have now.
Yeah.
And I said, we want bids on both of them. Well, he wants to come and talk. And I said, don't give us a bid, then you can come to the commissioners' meeting and talk.
Yeah, that'd be good.
So I'm working on it.
Okay, yeah.
Because I could not find our latest contract in that office.
I know we did it. I know it's weak. We covered everything, covered all of them, if you remember the time. But who knows where the contracts got to, so.
So he did send us a copy, but it doesn't list what I thought should be listed down there.
We can take care of that.
So we're working on it, but we are working on getting a contract.
Appreciate that.
The one we got now says we're on a month-to-month basis. I didn't think it expired until October of this year.
Okay. Look forward to having him come in. Andrew something, Andrew...
Andrew something, yeah. Nice kid.
Gower. Andrew Gower. I'm so proud of myself at this moment. Yeah, Andrew Gower.
But I did give him a list of, and told him that he could go to each office and talk to them if he wanted to.
Be a good thing to have that inventory, just know what we all, we all, because we've had some, we're officers on their own independently, and they work on their own blanket things, so, yeah. Okay, sounds good. All right, anybody else? Nothing else? I make a motion we adjourn.
Okay.
All in fair and sound.